Good morning, everybody. Just a little housekeeping before we start. If you would put your phone to silent or vibrating, that would be super. And then if you have a side conversation, some of the microphones will pick that up. And since we're live streaming, you'll be immortalized on the internet forever. So if you need to talk to somebody privately, maybe outside in the hallway would be a better solution for you. All right, it's nine thirty, and I would like to call the county commissioners' regular meeting agenda for September third, two thousand and twenty-four to order. Commissioner Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Ibarra.
Here.
Commissioner Jones are also here. If you would stand and join me for the playing allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item three is public hearing. We have a few today, so we'll start off with the Cox zoning district amendment application, CDA zero two dash two four. So we'll start in the room. Would anybody speak on or against the Cox zoning district amendment application, CDA zero two twenty-four? All right, how about online? Would anybody speak on or against the Cox zoning district amendment application, CDA zero two twenty-four? Last call for the Cox zoning district amendment application for online and in person. Commissioners, I entertain a motion to close that public hearing.
So moved second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. We'll open up the, uh, somebody's gonna have to tell me how to pronounce this correctly. Lunatic Place Preliminary Flat Application, S D zero two twenty-four.
That's a tiny twist there.
I take comments on or against Lunatic Place Preliminary Flat Application, S D zero two twenty-four. All right, how about online? Last call for online or in-person comments for or against Lunatic Place Preliminary Flat Application, S D zero two twenty-four. Commissioners, I entertain a motion to close that public hearing.
So moved second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. The next public hearing will be amendments to the Albany County zoning resolution aquifer protection overlay zone. We'll take comments in the room. Please, Sarah, come on up.
Thank you, Sarah. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Sarah Goran. I'm speaking for Albany County Clean Water Advocates. We generally favor the proposed amendments to the Albany County zoning resolution pertaining to the aquifer protection overlay zone. We have the following specific comments. The first is that exposed bedrock needs to be added back to the definition of vulnerable feature. Exposed bedrock is included in the definition of vulnerable feature in the current regulations, and we are unaware of any good reason to delete it as the Casper Aquifer Protection Plan repeatedly refers to exposed bedrock as a vulnerable feature. And we've provided some references there. Second item is minimum lot size. We suggest the language be left as it stands in the current regulations. While the deletion is intended to reduce redundancy, it also assumes that everyone knows what the word parcel means in a planning context. And so leaving the language as it stands in the current zoning resolution probably reduces confusion. And finally, subsection D nine five of the current regulations, which is modifications of APOZ developments, has just totally disappeared. It's neither redlined or included in the clean copy. And so we suggest restoring this paragraph as it stands in the current regulations. The recommendations of the planning department are to pass these proposed APOZ amendments and table the proposed amendments to the wastewater regulations that are in the next public hearing. We want these APOZ amendments to go forward as much as anyone, but not without the amendments to the wastewater regulations. This is simply because almost everything pertaining to septic systems in the APOZ has been deleted from the APOZ regulations and instead added to the wastewater regulations. So if the APOZ amendments are passed and the wastewater amendments are not, then there's no special regulation of septic systems in the APOZ for as long as the wastewater amendments are held back. And there's no telling how long that might be. Our suggestion is for the commissioners to seek a meeting with the Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality as a matter of urgency to modify and finalize the delegation agreement and take any other steps necessary to enable these proposed APOZ amendments and the proposed wastewater amendments to move forward together. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Sarah. Anybody else in the room would like to make a comment on the amendments to the Albany County zoning resolution aquifer protection overlay zone? All right, how about online? Last call in the room and online for amendments to the Albany County zoning resolution aquifer protection overlay zone. Commissioners, I entertain a motion to close that public hearing.
So moved second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. The final public hearing today would be amendments to the Albany County Design and Construction Standard for Small Wastewater Facilities and Regulations for Permit to Construct, Install, or Modify Small Wastewater Facilities Pertaining to the Aquifer Protection Overlay Zone. Anybody like to speak on or against amendments to Albany County Design and Construction Standards for Small Wastewater Facilities in the room? Sarah, please.
No, I have to talk fast on this one. Okay, again, I'm Sarah Goran, speaking for Albany County Clean Water Advocates. Again, we generally favor the proposed amendments to the wastewater facilities regulations. But one major thing we would like to see changed is to add all new and replacement septic systems must be advanced treatment units for properties within the APOZ on less than thirty-five acres. The reason for that is that replacing existing septic systems with conventional units does nothing to reduce contamination that's being released into the aquifer by the more than three hundred septic systems already in place there. We recognize that extending the requirement for an ATU to include replacement systems may result in more expense for current homeowners. Consequently, we suggest the Albany County Commission proceed with the APOZ amendments as proposed, subject to what I just said about those going forward together with these wastewater regulations, and amend the wastewater regulations at a future point to require ATUs for replacement systems as well. Alternatively, the commission could amend the regulations now to set a future date, say, January first, two thousand and twenty-six, for requiring all replacement systems within the APOZ to be ATUs. Now, I want to be totally clear on this, that we are advocating replacement of ATU, of commissionals systems with ATUs only as necessary as those systems fail. We are not saying dig up a functioning septic system. I mean, that would be silly. We're not advocating that. So only as systems fail, gradually they will be replaced with advanced treatment systems. A phased-in approach to requiring ATUs for both new and replacement systems would allow Albany County and D E Q to develop the list of approved ATUs and therefore make things more certain for homeowners and to seek funding to assist homeowners as needed. When looking for funding, commissioners also should be aware there's another difficulty on the horizon. That is, according to the planning department's mapping, which is attached to the comments I just gave you, there are a hundred and two septic systems on lots that are less than an acre within the APOZ and another forty-nine on lots of one to two acres. Most of these are in the Laramie Plains, Sherman Hill Estates, and Valley View subdivisions. As the need arises to begin replacing septic systems in these areas, which is not too far in the future, as many of them are now decades old, depending on the shape of the lot and where the residence sits, there may not be room on these small lots to build a new leach field that is at least a hundred feet from the domestic well that's on the property or from their neighbor's domestic well. And this is a basic sanitation requirement, no matter what kind of septic system is installed. Now, we can look back with twenty-twenty hindsight and say, we should never have allowed those subdivisions to be developed on such small lots. And the expectation at the time was that city water and sewer be extended to those areas. That proved to be an unwarranted assumption, and it's kind of a lesson in how poor or no land use planning almost inevitably results in substantial costs down the road. But that being said, it would seem prudent for the county to start looking for funding to facilitate connections to the Laramie municipal system or to establish localized wastewater treatment systems, like you know, sometimes see in trailer park areas, often called package systems, to assist the small homeowners on small lots, just looking forward. So again, thank you for the chance to talk.
Thank you, Sarah. Anybody else in the room like to make a comment for or against amendments to the Albany County Design and Construction Standard for Small Wastewater Facilities? How about online?
I will make a comment, but I wanted others to go first.
You've had the opportunity.
Sally, so it's up to you if you want to.
Be down here.
Okay. Good morning, Sally.
David, Sue, and Pete and Terry are morning. I'm Sally Plummer. I've lived in Laramie since nineteen eighty-two, and I just keep looking at water issues. I taught, so I brought handouts, but you don't have to receive them. There's only three things I'd like to say briefly. In terms of the decision about wastewater. One is that water flows downhill. So when I've taught children and I've taught adults, it's like you have to realize the flow that this chart, which was produced by NASA, represents. And the flow is a cycle. So water does flow downhill, and that's one of the issues related to the aquifer. The second is, as you may know, from well studies you've done or whatever, is that water gets stuck underground. That's true not only in Albany County, but other places in the state. Once it's in the aquifer, doesn't just fly away. And there's problems that we face and we keep facing because it gets stuck. The lesson I want to say is that the decision that you're all empowered to make affects the life of us all, right here. I have a grandson that I hope stays in Laramie, as our children have. But when you look at our water, we have two sources, and you know them well. If we can keep protecting our water, Harry, Pete, and Sue, both what we can see and what we can't see because it's so deep underground in the aquifer. So thank you for protecting us from excessive wastewater in new developments and other places.
Thank you, Sally.
Thank you.
Any other comments in the room or online for the amendments to the Albany County Design and Construction Standard for Small Wastewater Facilities? Commissioners, I entertain a motion to close that public hearing, please.
So moved second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. I think it's finished as a public hearings. Item four, comments from the public. Would anybody like to make a public comment here in the room? We'll start there. All right, how about online? Last call for public comment, online or in the room. Commissioners, I entertain a motion to close the public comment.
So moved second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item five is disclosures. Commissioner Jones, any disclosures?
We do not move so.
Commissioner Ibarra.
I have.
And I have a, I will be abstaining from item sixteen. Thank you. Six, considerations of changes on the agenda. Any changes to the agenda?
Okay.
Looky there, yay.
Aren't you excited?
Yeah, super. Item seven, approval of this consent agenda. Commissioners, I entertain a motion.
I moved that we approve the consent agenda. Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. That moves us to page two, the regular agenda. Item eight, Rob, good morning. Present for approval, invitation to bid for purchase and delivery of one twenty-twenty silver, twenty-twenty-five Caterpillar one forty-eight all-wheel-drive motor grader, Rob.
Yes, commissioners, I would like to go out for a bid for a new motor grader for the Rock River area. Currently, in our department, we have four graders in Laramie and three in Rock River. There's come a much more demand on the, with the wind towers and the subdivisions and stuff that are kind of sprouting up in the northern part of the county. So we're asking to go out for bid for a new motor grader for that area. The money would come from the spent two thousand and eighteen taxes, which you have funds there, so. One change we need to make in the, in the bid document on section two, point one-two, the delivery date. It has December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. We actually need to change it to March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. And then also on, in section three point zero one, the same thing. It's December thirtieth, we need to change it to March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thanks, Rob. Commissioners, any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. I spent a good deal of this last weekend up in the north part of Albany County, and for the amount of traffic, those roads are unbelievably good.
We've been spending a lot of time this summer up there.
I know.
And improving some of them and hauling their gravels.
So thank you very much.
We are getting a lot more calls on that area, just, just like you said, there's a lot more traffic and more recreationalist and that's just Wyoming's becoming a spot to, for outdoors, so.
There's, there's a lot of traffic.
Unfortunately, to get to some of the outdoor places, they evolve our roads.
Commissioners, I entertain a motion for item eight. If you know, there are no further questions.
I moved that we approve item eight as presented. Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thanks, Rob. Appreciate it. Item nine, acknowledged receipt of Albany County Statement of Receipts and Expenditures for the preceding twelve months, setting forth the source and amount of all receipts and the purpose and the amount of all expenditures, and to be signed by the chairman and the clerk of the board, and shall be posted on the county's designated official website in the manner provided in Wyoming State Statute eighteen dash three dash five sixteen subsection F and published. Kayla, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This is the Statement of Receipts and Expenditures from the preceding year. I will get it up on the website today after Pete and I sign it and get it advertised. It's good to go.
Commissioners, any questions? I entertain a motion for item nine. Thank you, Kayla.
I moved that we approve item nine as presented. Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item ten, present for consideration Cox Zoning District Amendment Application, CDA dash zero two dash two four. Joe, good morning.
Morning, commissioners. So this applicant is Kevin Cox, doing business as Property Works LLC. The location is Fort Herick Plain. Request is to change the zoning of their entire property from agricultural to partial. There were some reviews. Most had no concerns with the application. The Consecration District commented on erosion. Y dot commented on access, right-of-way work, and drainage. And their full comments can be seen in the review section. Planning Department believes that the proposed zoning district amendment generally follows suggestions of the Albany County Comprehensive Plan. This location makes sense for commercial zoning because of the presence of two highways intersecting. Each commercial use in the land use table should be looked at when considering whether these partials should be commercially zoned, and none of the land uses presented in the applicant's narrative are final with this application. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners approve the Cox Zoning District Amendment, CDA oh four two four, adopting and incorporating the staff analysis findings of fact and whose law, as each was stated in the staff.
Thank you, Joe. Commissioners, any questions, Joe?
Joe, I can't remember if at the P and Z there was anyone there that opposed this.
No. We got two. We had one comment in person for someone that was for it, and we had one comment that came in through our portal of also supporting the.
This was the art museum, correct?
Yeah.
There are no other questions. I entertain a motion for item seven, please.
I moved that we approve item ten as presented. Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item eleven, present for consideration. Is it Lunatic?
Lunatic, yeah.
Lunatic Place Preliminary Flat Application, S D zero two dash two four. Joe, thank you.
All right, the applicant and owner is all committing. Is located at a hundred and three Circle Drive. Request is for the approval of the three-lot subdivision preliminary flat on their twenty-six-point-one-nine-acre property. Water will be provided by individual wells. Septic systems are being proposed for each block. No new roads are being proposed. There were some reviews. Most comments have been addressed or will be addressed at the final flat stage. The applicant has provided a preliminary flat application, including all required documentation and reports. A final flat application will be required if the preliminary flat application is approved, which will also require approval from you guys. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted three to one to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners approve Lunatic Place Preliminary Flat Application, S D zero two two four, adopting and incorporating the staff analysis findings of fact and whose law, as each was stated in the staff.
Thank you, Joe. Commissioners, any questions? I saw the drainage, and that will be addressed as we move there that the canals overflowed in twenty-twenty.
Yeah, so they'll have to do a retention on, and that'll be on the final flat application that will be required to be put on in flat as well.
Thank you, Joe. Commissioners, any other further questions? I entertain a motion for item eleven, please.
I moved that we approve item eleven as presented.
Second.
Second, yeah. I'm saying that about the work each.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, Joe. Item twelve, present for consideration amendments to Albany County Zoning Resolution Aquifer Protection Overlay Zone. David, good morning.
Morning.
Sheriff, commissioners.
Okay. Um. So, yeah, so the Planning and Zoning Commission has provided a recommendation of approval of these amendments to the protection overlay zone. These were based on the Casper Protection Plan as, as was updated. I just kind of want to run through what, what you're, what changes you're seeing. You're seeing amendments to the description of aqua protection overlay zone, amendments to the definitions. We removed the small wastewater system standards from the aqua protection overlay zone. There'll be a separate request to include those into the small wastewater regulations. The Table of Prohibited Uses has been amended. What you're seeing there is you're seeing a lot of condensing of the language and uses so that there's not just this huge list, but it also, it will include everything that's already in the list, but just it kind of condenses it, makes it a little more readable. Setbacks from vulnerable features have been amended to include all development. Site-specific investigation standards have been amended. The non-conforming standards have been deleted from this section relating to the non-conforming standards of zoning regulations generally, and we've removed the standards that are regulated, regulated by state agencies. So references to state agencies have been, been taken out. So, I mean, this has been kind of a long, long process that we went through. On County Attorney's Office has been involved as well. And so what we're bringing to you, we feel comfortable with, planning and zoning feels comfortable with. However, we've got some other things going on in the background. My memo was written before we had any, anything back from the Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality. We have met with them a couple of times. We, as in staff, have met with them a couple of times about basically the wastewater regulations, which is what we're going to talk about next. And, and we've, we've, we've received a letter, which I've passed on to you guys. If you don't have it, I have another copy you can get. But as for these regulations, I guess to bring it back, we, our staff would, would recommend that we table any action on this until we, we get the wastewater regulation part figured out and then bring them back at the same time. Just for the fact that we're removing some of the standards for wastewater installations from this document, and it will not be those same standards because we're going to put those in the wastewater regulations. Let's see, the one thing, appreciate Ms. Goran's comments. She commented on the subsection that disappeared. We agree, the subsection did disappear, and it wasn't redlined anywhere. So we would, we would ask that we include that back into this document and just leave it as it was not discussed or removed by planning and zoning and just keep it where it is. And if we need to go back and modify that in the, in the future, we can do that. But looking at it, it's basically standards for the modification of development. It's already accrued or, or permit, it's already been approved. So we don't think it's going to be any harm to add that back in. We would, we'd recommend that be added back in. And I think that's all I would like to address of those, the comments that were received by you guys. And, yeah, my recommendation is to, to table this until probably the first meeting in November. And I think we should be able to come back and get this done. You'll have more information. I can tell you, I mean, do you want me to tell you about the wastewater stuff right now? Or do you want me to stick with this? Because.
Let's stick with this and then we'll go to that next one.
Yeah. There's a reason behind it.
Right, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, David. Commissioners, any questions?
No questions, just comment. You know, I, I go to the P and Z meetings, and my understanding or eyewitness that they, the P and Z unanimously voted for keeping these moving together. And so I support the tabling of this, especially because it would leave a big hole as far as any kind of regulations for wastewater, you know? I don't know if we need to address the amendments to put back in as far as the part that was taken out. I think we can do it all at one time, but I'd actually like to see a date of this not tabled as law. I'd like to see it back in October.
Okay. Thank you, David. Commissioner Joe, any?
Does that give you enough time?
Well, the, the problem is, is we won't be able to meet the legal requirements that need to take place for the next, the next regulations. They have to go back out for forty-five day review because we have to add something that wasn't there before. And so it'd be a substantive change.
Matt, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, I would just like to say, as far as this missing language, it wouldn't be being added back in. If these were re-adopted today, that language didn't get changed by these amendments, so it would stay within the regulations. So, yeah, we're not adding anything back in. It would just be, I guess, addressing them.
The fact that they were pulled without any vote on.
Right. Right. Yeah, these amendments wouldn't change them being included in the.
Okay.
Resolution.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, David. Any other questions, commissioners? I entertain a motion for, let's see where we are. Item twelve, please.
I moved that to re-table the amendments to Albany County zoning resolution until the wastewater can be worked out with D Q and the planning office. Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item thirteen, present for consideration amendments to the Albany County Design and Construction Standards for Small Wastewater Facilities and Regulations for Permit to Construct, Install, or Modify Small Wastewater Facilities Pertaining to the Aquifer Protection Overlay Zone. Spoiler alert, David, probably give us a little bit on this one.
Yeah, so. Thank you. Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, so, so, yeah, these, these have been in the works as well. We actually kind of got through this process, and we sent it to the E Q and I, I know they're short-staffed, so it was just a while before we were able to schedule meetings and, and talk with them about these regulations. But let me kind of go through what, what is, what you'll see in these regulations. So as, as we discussed earlier, these were taken from the aqua protection overlay zone and placed into the wastewater regulations, which is the, the appropriate place, place for these regulations. And that's where our authority has been given to us by the state to regulate wastewater through wastewater regulations. So the proposed amendments will include the following.
Um, so the proposed amendments will, will include the following. Um, they added a definition of replacement septic system. Um, added sections for standards within the aqua protection overlay zone, which includes requiring uh, septic systems to be designed by a professional engineer, requires new septic, septic systems to be advanced treatment units. Um, defines what constitutes an advanced treatment unit. Um, new and replacement systems will require inspections every five years. And uh, requires identification of vulnerable features by a geologist, geologist. So, so provide this to D E Q. Um, and um, we had a couple of meetings. Um, and basically, the only recommendation that we need to worry about at this time is a recommendation to include um, chapter twenty five, section six of the Wyoming water quality rules. So this is the rules that the state works under. So if we were not um delegated authority um, to do wastewater systems, chapter twenty five is what they use to then permit systems at the state. Um, and so they wanted us to, to add that, that language into our regulations. Um, and so that's what you're seeing, that all the red lines have to do with those regulations. We just included that here. Um, and then, um, let's see, we, yeah, there was just, we just included those there and then just kind of referred to them um, under the A T U section, just to, to note that that we can do this through this section of, of the, of their regulations. Um, the other comment that they may had to do with coordinating on updating the small wastewater system or delegation. It's not their intent, at least from the discussion that we had and the letter we received, to get this done before we do our regulations. Um, in our conversations with them, they are working on a delegation agreement for our county um, that they will be sending to us. Um, and once we get that, then we'll start working through the process of updating that delegation agreement. So um, it's my understanding they're close on that, but I don't know how close that is. Um, so with that, what, what we will need to do, because this was not in our regulation or this, this proposal before is we do need to send it out for forty five days um, review. Um, and post these on the, the, the website. So that's why um, our recommendation is to um, to take these back out to public comment, get a director from you to publish them, do the public comment. And then come back for your November first meeting, which is I think a Friday. He's scheduled for, it's right before the election, so um, and that will be, that'll meet the forty five day criteria. So, um, so yeah, that's our recommendation and I would be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, David. Commissioners, any questions? Just to make sure I understand, David, this uh, chap, or this paragraph on the bottom of page one and the top of page two. That is water qualities, chapter five, section six delineated, is that their language?
Yeah, chapter twenty five, section six.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's what we're looking at. I understand what we're looking at.
Yeah, see, I mean, there's a couple of words changed, but it was just like they're referring to something that doesn't research.
Yeah.
Just to make it clean for our regulations.
Super, yeah. And then if they come back and change something and we have it already out for public comment. Subs- subsequently, have you had that conversation to say, are we most of the way there so that we can send it out for public comment? Cause I would hate to have them come back in thirty days and say, hey, we got something to change here. And then we gotta go out for forty five more days. It's where the conversations are with regard to that.
Um, you know, we, we just took what they wrote is to add this into our regulations and we put it in there. So I mean, I can send it to them and see if they're, have any additional comments.
Yeah.
But that hasn't been done yet.
Yeah. Matt, have you had any conversations that would, okay?
No.
All right, super. Well, well, thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Commissioners? So then, David, I'm guessing you would want to table this and then, and then have a subsequent motion to put them out for public comment? Um, or what is?
Will be proper, Matt. I mean, I don't know if we table these ones, because it's going to be a new set that we're really reviewing, so.
Um, I think you could take, if you're not going to go forward with these.
Take no action on this, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then direct us to publish.
Okay.
Or we could, we could have David ask to amend the agenda to remove them from today based on the con- today's agenda based on the comments. Whichever.
Yeah, but then we don't have anything on the agenda to put stuff out for public comment. I mean, this is a placeholder that deals with that.
Are you just sending it back to planning and zoning or no?
No, no. No, they're, they're the waste water, they don't have.
Okay, so then I would just change it to be um direct, have direct planning and zoning and or staff to make the discussed changes. And bring it back before the board at the November first meeting, if that's what David's.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to be quick. Commissioners?
What she said. I move uh, that we uh, direct David and then planning office to put these back out. Uh, in new uh, amended regs uh, for the wastewater uh, for public hearing in November's first meeting. Second.
It's moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all those in favor signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Item fourteen, present for consideration, twenty twenty four urban systems project priority list and amendments to the major street plan. David, please.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, urban systems advisory committee reviewed earlier this year um, the major street plan and the urban systems project priority list. Um, they, they made a few changes, just a couple of changes to the major street plan. There was a couple of roads within the city. Um, that they amended. They upgraded the classification of Bradley Street between ninth and fifteenth. And Iverson Avenue between third and fifteenth street from locals to collectors. Um, so that, that moves the classification up and makes them eligible for USAC funding. Um, and they approved that, that was the recommendation. Um, and then the urban systems project priority list, they update every year, basically. It hasn't changed from last year and they just need that to be for, for this year. Um, and so we're just planning and zoning reviewed this and approved the priority list and the amendments to the major street plan. Um, and we're asking for you to do the same.
Thank you, David. Commissioners, any questions? Not an entertaining motion for fourteen, please.
No, we approve one, it's presented. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all those in favor signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Fifteen, present for, thank you, David. Present for consideration directive to publish the amendments to the Albany County zoning resolution pertaining to a new zoning district and set a public hearing for the first board of county commissioners meeting in November. Joe, good morning again.
Yes, so uh, planning and zoning commission directed staff to subdivide the current rural residential zoning district into three districts. Uh, these amendments provide two brand new zoning districts and also strengthen the scope of the current rural residential district. Uh, with this proposal, the land use table, sign regulations, accessory dwelling standards, and the zoning map were all addressed with the new changes. Uh, it's the planning department's recommendation that the board of county commissioners direct staff to publish these amendments to the Albany County zoning resolution. And schedule a public hearing for the first board of county commissioners meeting in November, which I believe is November first.
Thank you, Joe. Commissioners, any questions? Not an entertaining motion for fifteen, please.
I move that uh, let me move. I move that we uh, direct um the, sorry.
Send a second, or of my memo?
Okay, the planning department to publish um these uh, this county, Albany County zoning resolution pertaining to new zoning districts and set a public hearing for uh, November first. Uh, the first county commission meeting in November. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all those in favor signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Item sixteen. Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. Present for approval, community service block grant or C S B G. Albany County fiscal year twenty twenty five subrecipient agreement for contract C F D A number nine three point five six nine for the following agencies. Laramie Interfaith with an amount of fifty one thousand eight hundred, Safe Project in the amount of twenty four thousand nine hundred and thirty two dollars. Laramie Reproductive Health in the amount of twenty eight thousand eight hundred, Downtown Clinic in the amount of fifty five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Family Promise of Albany County in the amount of eighteen thousand six hundred and direct the vice chairperson to sign. Thank you, Brady. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bailey is out sick today, so I haven't covered this. Um, these are subrecipient agreements for our C S B G program, which the contract was proved at the last meeting uh, with the state, so we just get the jump and get our services. Subrecipient agreements out now, so. Here for any questions?
Thank you, Brady. Commissioners, any questions? Brady, you and the, and the planning or the grants office should be permitted for I've seen both ends of this transaction and uh, the amount of reporting, the ease of the reporting, uh, the detail of the reporting. I really do appreciate it. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, it's been a noticeable change. For you guys to happily figure out the reporting process, so.
Um, been a lot of work, but we're happy to do it.
Awesome. I entertain a motion for sixteen, if there are no further questions.
I move, we approve item sixteen as presented. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all those in favor signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries and I will abstain. Thank you. Um, seventeen, present for approval, subrecipient agreement between the Albany County Commissioners and Clywell Wyoming Cathedral Home for Children Community Program. Laramie Interfaith and Greater Wyoming Big Brothers Big Sisters in the total amount of one eight, one hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and one dollars for TAMP C P I twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five grant funding, C F D A number nine three point five five eight. For services provided between the date of October first, twenty twenty four and September thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Brady.
Again, uh, these are just our subrecipient agreements for our TAMP C P I program. Believe these amounts were approved at a previous meeting. I don't remember exactly when, but they were approved by you. And it said we got our contract from the state uh, signed at your last meeting. And so we're just, again, moving ahead with the subrecipients.
Thank you, Brady. Any questions, Commissioners? Not an entertaining motion for item seventeen.
I move that we approve item seventeen as presented. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all those in favor signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Eighteen, thank you, Brady. Present for approval, road use agreement by and between the board of commissioners of Albany County, Wyoming and Connect Gen Albany County LLC. For Albany County roads utilized for the construction of the Rail Tie Wind Project. Jennifer, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. So this is the road use agreement that's required by the wind permit for rail tie for them to start the construction on the road zone. Um, it has gone through Jake in engineering and through Rob Fisher. And we believe everything that needs to be addressed is addressed in both the agreement and the plans that are attached to the agreement. Have any questions for me? I'm happy to answer them. And also Mark Lawler from Connect, Connect Gen is here if you have any questions for him as well.
Brady.
Yeah, Jennifer, everything is Connect Gen, but Repsol bought it, so does it not have to be in that name?
So Repsol bought Connect Gen, but Connect Gen still exists as an entity. So it is Connect Gen um, Wyoming LLC that is still the company that is doing the project. It is just now that that company is owned by Repsol, whereas before it was owned by, help me, I can't remember.
Yeah, we have um, uh. Yeah, yes.
So that, that overarching ownership has changed, but the entity that the county is dealing with, the entity or name is in, none of that has changed.
Okay.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any other questions, Commissioners? Did not entertain a motion for eighteen, please.
I move that we approve item eighteen as presented. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all those in favor signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you, Jennifers. Nineteen, set a work session with city council for October eighth, twenty twenty four at six P M. We're going to talk town and gown, I believe.
There's actually, I put it on the agenda. I didn't print it off, so I will tell you what. It looks like Town and Gown, UW President's Update, and then ASUW update is tentative as of right now, but those are the things that are on as of right now. So. I think I had asked previously about that October eighth date, because I think the other date that they had suggested was during Waco, so.
I remember that discussion.
Yeah.
Yep, I have it in there.
Yeah, I have it.
Is that six o'clock?
Yes, and I, it'll be at city council chambers.
Commissioners, I entertain a motion for item nineteen.
I move that we approve item nineteen as presented. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all those in favor signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Twenty, um, executive session pursuant to Wyoming State Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five A triple I. I entertain a motion for executive session.
I move that we exit regular session and move into executive session pursuant to Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four five A. In the, we, at ten fifteen, second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Leaving regular session, leaving executive session. We will be back uh, shortly and uh, catch you here in just a few, few minutes. Thank you.
And got through this.
Okay, we are back. Item twenty-two, return to regular session. I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we return to regular session. At some room, ten ten. And then at ten thirty-one, second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Item twenty-three, action if needed regarding executive session. I'd entertain a motion for that action.
I move that we approved the hundred dollar check for the filing of the complaint in district court. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Item twenty-four, approved vouchers for August twenty twenty-four. I'd entertain a motion.
Vouchers?
I'm waiting for Amanda to bring them down.
Oh, okay. I'm, I'm second. You're moving.
I'm moving. I move that we, uh, approve vouchers for August twenty-four.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Uh, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further?